Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. And just before we start, I can remind everybody, we are in live feed. Want to welcome the three councillors who are in via Zoom. And the rest are in person here. Okay, so. We will start with a moment of reflection. And those who can stand, please do so. Be good for a stretch. Thank you. Declare disclosure of the community interest that now or any point in time through the meeting. And first on the agenda here is confirmation of the agenda. Uh, is anybody, there's no deletions that I'm aware of?
Uh, through, through the warden, there is one add to the bylaw section. And that relates to John's report on um, the whale online upload. So when you upload it, we should just, and all it is, is an execution by law saying for warden and the clerk to sign that agreement that you see in your package.
Okay.
And we will make sure it's up on the screen so everybody can see it.
So that will be by law number nine point two?
It'll be by law thirty seven eighty two.
So put nine point two on the agenda there.
Yes, it'll be nine point two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could have a motion to confirm the agenda with one, that minor change moved by councillor Wilhelm. Second by councillor McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie? Perfect, we have consent agenda. So we have items five point one to five point eight. Including the minutes of the last meeting, anybody want to see anything pulled? Councillor McDermott?
Uh, five point two, County of Prince Edward Island, Bill two eighteen, just one little segment center.
Okay, so do you want to move that down further in the agenda or do you want to discuss it right away?
Uh, we can just discuss it right away.
Okay. You?
Uh, it's on page ten, moving the nomination day from the end of July to the second Friday in September. Uh, it came up at our Perth East meeting and it will create a, a lot of extra work for the staff because they have to get everything ready. At our lower levels anyway, and that makes an awful short timeline for them. And if we could just uh. Send that we would support not moving the nomination date.
Anybody have any comments with regards to councillor McDermott's comments? Councillor Eggers?
Wasn't there a thing come out from AMO yesterday about that? I thought they uh.
There might have been, but I was in so many meetings, I never got it read.
They changed it to the third Friday in August.
Oh, okay, I could have missed that email.
The, the province did or they're recommending that?
Well, AMO.
Well, AMO doesn't rule.
Oh, right, well, I just thought maybe it had a change, but. Fine, okay, no, we'll go with what he wants.
Laurie?
So through the warden, thank you for bringing that up as a, a former person who used to run elections. But there is a lot of work, so you know, the, it looks like they're going back to what it was prior to the changes where they moved everything up for nomination day. So we will check the AMO out, but you kind of be able to support not moving the date. We can go with that language in the resolution to say we support not moving the date and keeping it with the current um, uh, end of July date. And that way we can still correspond and we will check the AMO data. But it, it, it makes a huge difference for your clerks. Lot of work.
Comments on that? Further comments? Todd or Doug or Matt? Todd, you got something?
Just from a procedural perspective, I think we would be wise to have a distinct council resolution with regards to that request related to the date issue. And receive the consent agenda and approve the minutes as a separate entity. So I think we have two items that we should do from a procedural perspective.
Yes, I was gonna ask for a resolution, but I wanted to make. Or give everyone a chance to speak to it first.
And I agree, especially for uh. I'll say this pun intended, for us to do mail in elections, you know, the fraudulent way as according to President Trump. Uh, you need some time to get that stuff put together and mailed out, get your ballots and everything done, so. I would prefer myself to leave it at the original date. So I'm gonna ask for a resolution. To send a letter asking that the closing date remain the same. And that would be the end of July, I believe it is. So if somebody wants to move that, Todd? Second by you? Any further discussion? Those in favor? Carrie? And we'll go back to consent agenda, items five point one to five point eight. And the motion would be that council receives a consent agenda, agenda items five point one to five point eight. And approves the November fifth, two thousand and twenty council minutes, moved by councillor Kellam, seconded by councillor Eggers. Okay. Moving on again. Winter maintenance, oh, Carrie? Favor of? Sorry? Was a long day yesterday. Okay, public meetings, hearings and delegations, we have the winter modernization consultant report up front. From SEMA and John, I'm gonna let you do a little intro for this. So take it away.
Thank you, Warden Herson, good morning, council. Um, as we get to our SEMA representatives on the screen here, I just maybe take a moment to um. Acknowledge our Public Works Working Group on this project and, and that's Wes Kipfer from Perth East. Mike Kramer from West Perth. Lindin Couch from North Perth. Ken Bettles from Perth South. Jed Kelly from the town of Saint Mary's. And Bill Wilson from that Perth County. Uh, I know we all faced challenges in twenty twenty, working through this pandemic. And I can't recall another year in my, my time at the county that winter maintenance has dominated our workloads. And I just want to thank the group for all their knowledge and support throughout this project. And I really appreciate that we all worked so well together. But most importantly, you're gonna find today a lot of information in this report and presentation about our winter operations. But now that happens with all our dedicated staff and operators. They are the ones who do the real work in the worst possible weather conditions. As we head into this winter season, I just want to say a big thank you to them and I hope everyone stays safe, safe and healthy. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce two team members from SEMA, our consultant working on our winter modernization project. And they are Max Porchannick, our senior project manager. And Ressa Onrani, associate partner and senior project manager. Gentlemen, welcome to Perth County Council and I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, John, for that uh, introduction to the project. And I was also gonna thank all of our, our client team, you've already done that. I, we really appreciate the effort they put into helping us with this project. Also, thank you to the council members for giving us the opportunity to, to present this report. I wonder if we can get the slide deck up? Okay, so thank you, thank you once again, and if we move to the next slide. So this just presents the agenda, what I, what I'm gonna present today is to review the project objectives, the methodology. Uh, what we've learned about the current status of winter operations in Perth County. Identify some key initiatives that we found to modernize operations and then finally a financial summary. So starting off with the project objectives was to identify, okay, identify opportunities to modernize. And provide synergies in winter maintenance operations for Perth County and the partner municipalities. We also were to make recommendations for future actions for modernization and to develop an implementation plan. And so today, uh, I'm gonna present the key, key findings. So the methodology is shown on this slide, had several aspects. First thing was for us to learn about winter operations in the county. And we did that through a, a written questionnaire in a series of interviews with all the staff that John mentioned, as well as some other people that. And that covered fifteen specific aspects or topics about winter maintenance. And so from that, we developed the database on the current operations. Uh, the next task was looking at legislative requirements to, that we, and also develop some benchmarks related to those fifteen different topics. Uh, how does Perth County and its agencies compare with peer groups across the province and elsewhere? Once we did, did, we developed a gap analysis to look at where the county and agencies are ahead of, ahead of the curve. In cases perhaps behind the curve, look for opportunities for modernization. And then we did a special analysis to look at the feasibility of integrating and optimizing the maintenance yard network. And this had uh, four, four key scenarios we looked at. One was optimizing the current routes using a special computer optimization program. The second part was looking at optimizing current routes but ignoring municipal boundaries, in other words, routes could cross municipal boundaries. The third aspect was looking at whether the maintenance yard network could be reduced and uh, to select the, the yards for reduction. We developed a special functional rating of maintenance yards and removed them one by one according to that functional rating. We also did a analysis that we called the clean slate analysis, starting out with a clean slate. If we could locate maintenance yards in the ideal locations for network coverage, where would that be? And so we did a clean slate analysis to look at what's the, uh, look at the feasibility of a minimum number of yards. Each of these cases, for each of this scenario, was we used for what you might call performance measures. Uh, two of them are related to costs, that was what is the, uh, the, the yard operating, annual yard operating cost? And what is the annual fleet operating cost for each of these different scenarios? And we looked at two service level measures, one being the, what we call the capacity ratio. That is the spreader capacity on a given route versus the material quantity required to complete that route. And so we could look at the degree of buffer. How much extra capacity is there to cover times when, when we have to go beyond the normal application rates? And the second, uh, service level measure was the service time ratio. So we looked at what is the predicted service time to cover that route according to the optimization scenario that we're looking at? In comparison with minimum maintenance standards, and again, we're looking for what is that buffer? And so finally, after we completed those analysis, we developed recommendations for improvement where that was warranted. Developed an, an implementation plan and a first order estimate of costs and savings. So if I could have the next slide? Our first task was to look at the, the current status and look at the possible gaps. And uh. You know, as I mentioned, we looked at fifteen different topics, it was quite a large process. And so there's a, I guess a thumbnail summary is that we found in all cases, there's quite a high level of service that exceeds the provincial minimum maintenance standards. We found that the fleet is quite well equipped with equipment. The number of service vehicles compares well with benchmark with our comparison with other agencies. The age profile of the fleet is also very good, it indicates good blood cycle management. When we looked at the roadway routes, the route lengths and the route balance, uh, we found that the, the route lengths compared very well with the benchmarks. And so generally that tells us the routes are quite well laid out. Uh, when we looked at the, the technology and materials in, in use, we found that in, in a number of cases with uh. Our client agencies using state of the art material and start state of the art materials, the state of the art, sorry, technology and materials. The gaps we found was that uh, the policies and winter operations uh, practices that are used vary quite a bit from agency to agency. Even though the minimum maintenance standards are always met. We found that there's quite variation in the policies behind that and practices used to achieve them. Uh, we found that the information management, in some cases, is very, information management systems as technology useful for information management. In some cases is state of the art, but not all the time. And there's room for harmonization there. We found that the roadway service delivery is good, but there's some, uh, service delivery is not always efficient for sidewalks, parking lots and patrolling. And we found that road salt management plans are deficient in not being updated on an annual basis and not being conveyed to. To. Environment Canada who trusts that information. So if I could have the next slide, please? So as I said, we looked at fifteen different topics. Our initiatives for modernization were summarized in these five topics. Policies and legislation, network optimization, managing operations, improving road safety and communicating with public. And so I'll speak to each of these. I could have the next slide? So our first modernization initiative speaks to policies and legislation. As I said, uh, the minimum maintenance standards are always met. But it is good policy and in fact, it is strongly recommended by OGR to go beyond the maintenance standards in terms of uh, strong level of service document. Policy document, strong winter operations plans and uh, on documentation. And we, that is not always the case, but particularly that the practices vary from agency to agency within Perth County. And we think there's a, a strong benefit, especially going to defensive claims and consistent levels of service. That those policies and practices are harmonized as much as possible. So we're recommending that effort be made to do that. Uh, the second, I mentioned the road salt management plans, that's a requirement of the Canadian Environmental Protection Act. For every agency across the country that uses more than five hundred tons of salt a year. And we can see that even though road salt management plans are in place, uh, they are out of date and there's a benefit. They're required to be reviewed annually, but there's also a benefit to doing that because it promotes efficient use of, of road salt. So the benefits of updating these policies and like consistent levels of service, defensive claims and managing environmental effects of road salt. If I could have the next slide? Uh, so I mentioned that we did a special analysis on the feasibility of reducing the maintenance yard network. And this slide just summarizes some of those results, it was a fairly complex slide. Uh, we looked at different scenarios, including the current maintenance yard network. Maintenance yard network that is optimized within existing municipal boundaries. Optimize without existing municipal boundaries. Then we looked at what we call the yard removal, so we remove maintenance yards until the service levels could no longer be met. And we did our, our clean slate analysis, so the graph on the top illustrates the uh. Financial aspect of that. Each of those bars represents one of the scenarios that we looked at. The orange part on, of the bar at the top is our predicted cost of operating the fleet, predicted annual fleet costs. The blue bar is the predicted annual maintenance costs. And the top of each bar is the sum of that, so that's the total fleet and yard costs associated with a given scenario. You can see that the uh, with, there is small reduction shown with the optimized routes, that's the second bar to the right. Uh, that is considered within the, I guess, within the precision of our analysis method. And so really uh, the, in the first two bars is uh, within the estimation precision. But we looked at the removal of maintenance yard batteries, there was a small improvement. In route efficiency. Sorry, looked at removal of municipal boundaries. The next three bars are looking at three different parts of our yard removal scenario. And it demonstrates that the lowest cost option is operating with ten maintenance yards. And there's a reduction, total cost reduction, predicted cost reduction of about fourteen percent. Condition. And then if we look at the, the clean slate analysis, that's the farthest bar to the right. Uh, it's slightly higher cost than the, the ten yard, yard removal analysis. So that's the conclusion from that is as far as cost. It is possible to meet the minimum maintenance standards with the ten yard. But then if we looked at this, the bottom graph illustrates our uh, service level indicators. And as I mentioned, we use two indicators, one is related to spreader capacity. Look at that buffering capacity to make sure that spiders can complete the route without a reload. And the second service level indicator is the um. The, the service time indicator. And that's looking at the, the buffering service time to complete the route in, within the minimum maintenance standards. Yeah, so our current situation, or the, the current situation is that most. Most yard, most routes are completed well within that minimum maintenance standards. And also with extra capacity so that uh, in severe storm conditions, more material can be loaded on the truck. Uh, so if we look at the graph, in this graph, the bars going above the line indicate a reduction in service level. Bars going below the line indicate an improvement in service level and you can see that for the uh. The third case over, the no boundary situation, there is a small improvement in service level. If you look at the, to the right of those, there's a reduction in service level and the important finding is for our ten yard. Case which has the biggest cost reduction, it also indicates the service level reduction of about seventeen percent compared with the current situation. And so our, our overall conclusion from that is that unless we want a reduction in service level. This yard reduction idea is, uh, there's merit to it, but it's not ready for implementation. I have the next slide? So we believe that the uh. Different scenarios we looked at with various assumptions about, of course, about the yard network, which I explained, but also about the fleet network. Or the, the fleet size, the type of trucks, the number of trucks where they're located. And the um, that can have an impact on this, the cost, but also on the service level. And so we think that there is merit in looking at additional, additional scenarios within the, the optimized maintenance yard network. But to look at different arrangements of the fleet to see whether those, uh, the, the cost benefit can be attained without losing the service level. So that's recommendation for future work. Another aspect is the property. So our analysis focused on the cost of operating the maintenance yards with different numbers and different locations of the yards. It didn't look at the cost of real estate improvements that might be needed or a real estate cost associated with either retiring yards for the network. Or for the yards that are retained in the network, upgrading them to accommodate a different number of service vehicles. And so that, that's another uh, future work that is recommended in planning toward a future optimized network. So have the next slide? Our next initiative was about managing operations. I mentioned that uh. Modern information systems are used to some extent in the county and agencies, but not totally. Uh, we, we recommend a, a full rollout, a full rollout of ADL. That's Automated Vehicle Location Systems, that's the GPS systems on, on spreader, spreader trucks, plow trucks. The track its location, but more importantly, track the, the location and the amount of material that's being used. And the degree of plowing that's being, that's being used. It has a good benefit in feeding information to other management systems, fleet management, uh, material management, personnel management. It's a uh. And it's also the state of the art for doing that. It also is, has the capability to provide dashboards and uh, other forms of summarized data that make it easier to manage operations. So that's one recommendation. Another recommendation is to harmonize the weather forecasting tools and use state of the art weather forecasting tools and patrolling tools. Again, it's to ensure that information is tracked accurately and in a timely way and information is available, made available to use it. So our second recommendation is to make initial improvements to the current weather forecasting and patrolling tools. And in the future, look at a road weather information system uh, for Perth County that would. Uh, help promote future improvements to materials use, knowing more about what is the road temperature? What is the forecast of the road temperature so that salt rates and then perhaps in the future, uh, anti-icing can be implemented? And the last part of this initiative is looking at integrated service delivery. Mentioned that the service delivery is not always efficient for three of the non-roadway aspects. And so we're recommending an, an assignment to, to identify um. Which of those can benefit from, from integrated service delivery and to develop a pilot project to try that out. So benefits of these man, improvements to managing operations, current scheduling of equipment, staff, use of materials. Again, defensive claims and in providing automated, modernized management reporting tools. So if I could have the next slide? So the next, next initiative is called improving road safety and that really means uh, removing snow from the road or keeping it off the road. Perth County already has implemented to some extent, the, the modern practices of pre-treated and pre-wet salt. And I think recognizes the, the safety benefit in doing that, also the cost savings. Cost is, some cost savings from pre-treated salt is additional cost savings from pre-wet. And so from the cost point of view. And the safety point of view, uh, we've developed an implement, a phased implementation plan to first of all, transition to completely pre, pre-treated salt. And then to transition after that into pre-wet salt, which has some capital costs associated with it, but has uh. Quite high long-term savings. From here to your tier. The other road safety initiative is in installing snow fence, uh, many snow drifting whiteout sites were identified to us around the county. Uh, with very few remedial, remedial measures. There are snow fences and snow hedges and other remedial measures can be readily implied. And have a huge safety benefit as well as cost savings in reducing the, the, the maintenance effort to treat those locations by about thirty percent. So there's a, a substantial cost savings associated with that. Uh, again, it improves road safety, reduce the cost of plowing and salting. And reduce whiteouts, drifting, snowbank removal and road closures, so there's a good public safety benefit. And if I could have the next slide? Our final initiative is about communicating with the public. The, I guess the benchmark for this is five one one, which quite a few municipalities across the province have. Perth County and one of the municipalities have subscription to municipal five one one, it's not currently used for winter operations. And so at no cost, winter operations layer can be added to that. But in order to provide active, up to information, we're recommending a roadside webcam network. That uh, can, that can be posted directly to five one one to provide real-time, active road condition information to the public. That would also have the benefit in extending the knowledge of our, your patrolers and so would improve the efficiency of road patrol. So if I could have the next slide? So that's our, our five initiatives, uh, this is. This is a financial summary of those initiatives showing the condition or the, I guess, the crop structure, assuming that all of the initiatives are fully implemented. In the details of the implementation plan, some of them are staged. Some of them are appropriate for virtually immediate implementation. Some of it could be, could be three or more years out into the future. So this is an illustration of a full implementation. If you look at the information on the graph, anything above the line is a cost. The zero line, anything below the zero line is the savings. The orange bars indicate one-time costs, which could include planning costs or capital costs. The blue bars either are below the line are annual. So that would be some annual service costs for the ones above the line. Annual cost savings for the one below the line. And in summary, the, you know, the one-time costs, that is the planning costs and the capital costs amount to one and a half million. The annual service costs, for example, for ABL system or for weather forecasting system, about 80,000 a year. The annual net savings, this would be considered root optimization, considering reduced plowing and salting because of reduced snow drifting. And reduced materials costs with the implementation of pre-wet and pre-treated salt amount to about 850,000. So that is a summary. And I guess at this point, I could invite questions. For the presentation, this talked about a variety of initiatives for consideration. And so if there's any questions or discussion, I would be happy to address it.
Okay, thank you very much, Max. Questions from council, councillor Wellham to hand up?
First off, I want to thank the staff for their effort and the consultants. And I want to thank John for sending us the information. And John, I did read it all. It did take me a few days, but I did read it all. And I find it hard to believe that there cannot be improvements on combining our plow routes. And these are just comments I'm going to make. And I'm sure most of us, if not all, can improve in documentation. In example, utilizing ADLs to improve our ability to defend our operations if required in court. You know, patrols. I'm disappointed that there's nothing in there about how we could improve patrols. And I'm going to pick on Perso. We have MTO patrol our highways. At the same time, we have the county out patrolling their highways. And at the same time, we have Perso staff patrolling their highways. I'm sure they all see the same results because the wind blows the same direction across all, whether it's a county road or 23 or, or 151 or whatever. So I don't see why we can't reduce the number of people patrolling our roads. And somehow connect that they all provide information to the three municipalities that require patrolling and snowplowing and removal. And still, and I also like the idea of putting out snow fences again. We used to do that years ago and seems like we've got totally away from it, but they used to work. And I'm glad to see that that was brought in. Thank you.
If I could just address a couple of those, thank you very much for those comments. I'm sure that John and our client team is interested to hear them as well. In terms of the patrols, the, perhaps it was hidden a bit in the report, but there is a recommendation for a pilot project to look at integration of services and patrolling is one of those. So it's not, we didn't accomplish to, I guess, to make a plan for that. But we did recognize it as one of the areas where integration of services might be a benefit.
Okay. Councillor McDermott?
Yeah, on the 511, having those cameras, how does that relate to a person's privacy? Like, how are those cameras going to be used and where does that information go?
So cameras, you know, they're similar to the cameras that we see on Ontario 511. And there are some municipalities that use them. Originally, when like, let's say, RVs cameras or compass cameras, roadway cameras were introduced. There was concern about privacy issues and that was, you know, maybe 20 years ago or so. Now it's become quite ubiquitous. They're commonly used. They are focused, you know, they're looking at the road. They're not looking at a detailed place. It's more looking to try to get a wider picture of the roadway. I know in the early days, there was software developed that would, you know, blank out license plates. I don't believe that's used anymore because it's been shown to be not a concern. But you know, I guess that that is an issue that could be researched a little bit more to confirm what I've just said. But that's, my knowledge is it's, it isn't the issue.
Councillor Duncan had his hand up.
Thank you. Anyone that knows me knows I'm a big fan of trees and the whole living snow fence program. I'm just got a question as to the, is the 120,000 plus the consulting fee just a one-time investment? Or is that a yearly investment to save that 250,000?
That is a one-time investment in mainly in the cost of putting up permanent snow fence. And we didn't cost out the snow hedge because snow fence is a bit of a quicker solution. Snow hedge also sometimes involves property because it interferes a little bit more with land use. So that's, that would be, I guess, the planning study that was included in that would do an assessment of what is the best option. But the, the capital cost of that was based on permanent snow fence.
Thanks. It looks, to me, that looks like a very minimal investment for, for gain over the long term, for sure. Definitely a good bang for our buck. And I think if the county was to look into the living snow fence program, as those hedges mature, it takes cost away from us as well then too, as to maintain, move down snow fence by our staff then as well. So it's something we can look at for the future as a, as a county project, I think.
Yeah, let's make a quick comment here when we're on this topic. I'll keep it quick. So anyways, where I live on line 26 are known as the Harmony Road. In front of my house, basically, there's bush on each side of the road just before you come to my property. And it can be the biggest snowstorm and you're in there and it seems like all of a sudden you're just in heaven. And people traditionally tended to speed up in there. And then they would come out into the open and bang. Every year for the first 10 years at my farm, when I lived there, there'd be multiple accidents in front of my house. As I, prior to my farm, purchased, the previous owner planted a row of trees in my laneway along the fence line. And it goes back a couple hundred yards. That tree hedge now is about 30 feet tall. And it has totally 100% eliminated accidents in front of my house from multiple a year down to none. It is amazing what it has done. It just protects literally almost a quarter mile stretch of the highway with just one row of trees. It blows your mind. It's, it's something. It's crazy, the accidents I used to see and they're gone. It goes year after year now and that stretcher road doesn't drift over the way it used to in Black Ice. It's crazy. It's so personal experience, year after year, what hedges and tree lines can do.
Further questions? Or do you want to respond to that first, Max?
Oh yeah, just another, just another comment from my experience at MTO. We actually did some studies at MTO years ago that showed the plowing and salting trips in drifting areas are because of drifting after the end of the snowstorm. Not because of falling snow. And so there is a big, you know, there's a big cost saving potential as well, as well as.
Further questions? Todd, question or anything?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Just a couple of things. With regards to the use of weather forecasting and patrolling costs, those aren't insignificant, of course. I am curious to hear about experience elsewhere in our immediate vicinity with whether that's been implemented and, and how that's worked out.
Weather forecasting, there's two aspects. One is improving on the, or further implementing the forecasting system that some people are using now, which is based on OGR, OGRA weather forecast. There's some advantages to using their, I guess, their higher price that provides additional documentation, which is going to help you with defensive claims. It's not only provides the forecast, but it shows when that forecast has been accessed. So that's sort of the first step in a fairly low-cost approach. Likewise, I think your question also talked about patrolling. So there are partial implementation of patrol or apps. And that could be as a tablet or just a cell phone app. It has the advantage to providing again, documentation and possibly a, you know, a picture that goes along with the patrolers' report. And so there's an advantage to, to, to that in, in providing documentation and more consistent patrolling records. The other part of the forecasting, I guess, the higher priced aspect was implementing an RVs system. So RVs is road weather information system, similar to what MTO has. It's pavement, it's a roadside weather station and also sensors, more importantly, sensors in the pavement to tell you the pavement temperature. So you already have, all of your patrol vehicles are equipped with infrared thermometers, you know, which measure the pavement temperature when, when a vehicle's going past. But what it doesn't provide is a forecast of pavement temperature. And the forecast of pavement temperature helps when you're using winter liquids. It's maybe not essential for the pre-treating and pre-wetting, although it's beneficial. But if in my, I guess, I perceive that in the future, along with some of your neighboring agencies, you might begin to use anti-icing. So putting liquid on the pavement in advance of the snowstorm. To do that, it is essential to have not only the current pavement temperature, but a forecast of pavement temperature. And so that is what's behind recommending the higher-priced road weather information system. I don't know, does that address your question?
Sort of. What I was curious about is whether any of our immediate neighbors, Middlesex County, Oxford County, Wellington County, Huron County are using any of these enhanced measures? And whether we gained any insight into their experience with it?
Gee, I'm not sure that I have an answer to that question. We did look at surrounding counties for other aspects. Think we did about weather forecasting. I do know that as far as the, the OGRA weather, you know, enterprise weather app, which I'm recommending be used. It's about 45 municipalities in the province subscribe to that. I don't know whether your immediate neighbors do.
Okay, so that's about a 10% install in terms of the total number of municipalities in Ontario. All right, one, I guess, one further question, if I might. You recommended the consideration of a webcam network. Have you considered the availability of internet service to support that across your recommendation?
We did not look into the detail of it. It, I guess it would look at, you know, they would more likely be installed on more higher-class roadways. Where there would be more, more likely to be internet or landline connections. But we did not look in detail at that.
Doug, I had his hand up at one time there.
I was just going to answer some of Todd's questions there. Here in county definitely does pre-wetting for roads. Actually, John McClellan should be able to answer most of these as he drives around a little more than I do. The greatest snow fence living that Matt was talking about is the Linwood Road. Now that was thought about 40 or 50 years ago. We have to stop our farmers from plowing to the road. Because if you look at 23 South here, the first farm out of the town, they plow on the wrong side of the height of the bell telephone box. If anybody's noticed driving down 23 Highway, John's smiling, I can see him from here. I like the living fence, the hedges, but the hydro lines interfere and farmers have, as we've done the planting in West Perth, they plow them up. You know, I like his suggestions of patrolers. I think we have too many, obviously. We could save money because we have four in West Perth. I believe Bob said he has three different people. The MTO, you couldn't deal with them, I don't think, because the Miller Group's probably going to want money to do their part of the project. But I like your report. I don't know how much money we can save. We're pretty lean, as you said, Max. I don't know if we get some more class of roads. It might work, but a lot of places around us, Middlesex, also pre-wets. When I drive down there, you'll see all the bridges have the salt brine on them. So Middlesex does, Huron does. I'm just trying to think of Wellington County. If they, if they pre-salt the bridges that, but there is a lot of what we're talking about going on around us.
And I know that Wellington County was, you know, among the first promoters of using liquids. So, and I think they do use anti-icing in some places. And they do use winter liquids.
Okay, further questions? Daryl?
Wellington County there, maybe, I don't know if anybody knows, they do a lot of cornrow fencing, if you would. Have you seen that, Doug? I'm sure you have. I used to travel the Wellington roads a lot. So they, I'm sure they work a deal with the farmers to leave corn along certain roads and stretches. If it happens to be in corn, I don't know if they report it or catch it, but they'll leave about four or five rows wide. And that helps as a snow fence and, and ground drifting. So just wondering if anybody knows much about that.
All right, if I, Max, MTO looked at that and has done that in some cases. In MTO's case, we would pay for a few rows of corn to make, I guess, more interesting for the farmer. The issue with corn is that because of crop rotation, you don't always have the corn there. And also some farmers didn't really want to leave a bit standing just because they'd rather have their fields uniform. But it is a possibility. It is used in some places.
Thanks. Other comments or questions? Okay, I got a couple of three questions or comments, you know me. First, the cost you've indicated on this report, you're talking total cost to implement some of these things. Is that the total cost to do it for all six municipalities? Or is that sort of a cost for each municipality?
That is considering all the municipalities altogether as one happy family.
Okay. Another question, you talked about harmonization of service levels early on in your presentation there.
Yeah.
And so I'm kind of curious. So you've got the county, you've got Townes St Mary's, you've got the four lower tiers. You've got everything from a class two road to a class five road to a gravel concession. How would one go about harmonizing, harmonizing the service level with that much distinction in the roads?
So the, first of all, it is harmonizing for a given road class, right? Because obviously, if you got class four and five roads, you're not going to be doing things the same as class two roads. You know, we, especially looking at material application rates and whether salt is, let's say, mix is used or sand is used or salt is used. There's quite a variation in the switching from salt to sand or from sand to mix and in the material application rates that are used. And that is not a great situation from the defensive claims point of view. And that is not a great situation from the defensive claims point of view. Right? If if you're testifying in court about your operating practices and they find that. Let's say the agency or the municipality next to you is putting down twice the application rate. It's difficult to defend why you do it the way you do it. So that is one strong reason to try and harmonize as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. But, okay, so my other concern about that, so let's say we got so many kilometers of class two roads, which require a far higher level, higher, far higher level of service. So you've got one truck out there on the road or one operator out the road doing class two roads. So to really make that work properly, because I'm gonna use Perth South for an example, we've got a lot of paved roads, but we've got a lot of gravel roads. We don't have a lot of salt mix in our mixture because we can't put salt on the gravel roads per se. I think it's about five percent we put on. It's otherwise, you put a lot of salt on a gravel road, you're gonna wreck it. So if you want to keep doing the same level of service for your class twos or your class threes or your class fours. Does that really put a dent into the route structure the way it is now? Because you just can't keep switching. I know you can recalibrate your spinners and stuff and how much you're putting on, but you can't recalibrate how much salt or sand's going on. If you buy it next.
Yeah, I I agree that it's a limitation, especially not so much in the class of road, but whether or treated or paved road. That is true. And so there is a limitation. There's a limitation on how much you can optimize the roads.
Okay, another one was kind of the weather forecasting. I found that kind of interesting to be in the report. Because in today's technology, my phone chirps at me about every fifteen or twenty minutes with a weather report from somebody. So I'm not just sure how much better we can do on the actual weather side. And I know our public works people are looking at Environment Canada and. Weather Network and every other weather device that they can get access to information of off of. So I'm not sure how much better we can do in actually the actual per se weather forecasting. And I've often seen where they've been quite often wrong. John, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Warden, and I think what Max is trying to get at is, yes, you're you're correct. This day and age, we get a lot of reporting for weather reports. But I think the more important thing when it comes to winter winter maintenance operations is actually the weather or your road conditions and or your road temperature. So that plays a lot into what you're going to do as far as application rates and type of material that you're gonna apply to your roadway. And, you know, that that information is sometimes more valuable to you than than, say, just your regular weather report. Because those tend to be a little more general and not road specific. So I think that's kind of where where Max is getting at with some of this, like either, you know, webcams and R W S stations and things like that.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just think anticipate a snow or freezing rain or whatever. So we seem to have a good handle on that before it happens.
Right, and through you, Warden. We do have a very good handle. We do get a lot of weather reports. We are checking that constantly throughout the day. Yes, we are trying to track impending storms and things like that. So we do have a lot of information that way. We do have some information. Certainly, we're all outfitted with the infrared thermometers on our patrol vehicles and our plow trucks. However, as Max has stated, that kind of gives you the immediate, it doesn't allow you to forecast what those pavement temperatures will be in the future. And really, when you start to modernize your winter operations and Max has alluded to. D L A or direct liquid application and what we call anti-icing in the business. Those are the things that you really need to know is your road pavement temperatures, the forecasted ones. So, you know, I think we do very well with our weather reporting. But I think when we look to further optimize our operations, these are the types of things that we really need to to look at moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And just one last comment. The snow fence idea is a really good idea. Oxford County's been using that fairly extensively for a while. If you head down one thirteen or whatever, there's snow fences down that road all over the place once you get, once it turns into road six. And it does make a difference. And I will comment about the trees. That's a great idea, too, because there isn't a municipality around that doesn't have a farmer cropping the ditch. Let's be honest. But there is a drawback to those sometimes. And that is depending on the wind direction. Because we've had some roads in Perth South, one twenty two, one twenty five, but most of the farmers in Perth South have the tree lines already down their farms for erosion protection. There's a lot of them do it. And if we get the wrong wind, it's all we can do to plow those roads out because they just fill in like there's no tomorrow. And it's usually an east wind that does it to us.
If I could comment on that, you know, the prevailing wind after the end of the storm is usually from the west. And that's why we usually have protection on the west side of the roads. It is true, earlier in the storm, you do tend to get east wind and that can blow snow onto the road. And I guess it just depends what the priority is. And normally, the bulk of the drifting after the end of the storm is usually from the west, so that's why we focus on that.
Okay, anybody else got any comments or questions? John, anything to add?
Not at this time, Warden.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks, Max, for the report. Steps, I guess we'll have to have some discussion on this. And see where we go.
Okay, well, thank you for your attention. I, you know, sincerely hope, there's a lot of material in the report. You know, I'm sure it's gonna be good for discussion and I and I look forward to to hearing about the parts that will be put on the higher priority. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Max. Okay, I don't have a motion here, but we probably should have a motion to receive this report.
Yeah, to receive this presentation.
Okay, so if I could have a motion moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Duncan. To receive the report. Those in favor? Gary. Thank you. Now. I don't think we want to move further into discussion on this at this point, Mike. Or do we? What's counsel's prerogative here?
No, return to it.
Okay, so is there really any consensus among the four lower tiers and St. Mary's and yourself as to what part of this report you'd like to look at first or anything like that?
Through you, Warden. I know we've all talked here. So we're receiving a lot of this information just at the same time you are. So we haven't had an opportunity to actually see the final report. We do have a plan to get together as a group. We certainly have reviewed a good portion of of this draft report anyways. But we do have a plan to get together, look at all the recommendations from the report, sit down, what's feasible, what's not. What can we do in-house and what do we need to help with maybe future as far as a consultant kind of thing? So there is a lot of things that have been brought forward and and I'm pleased to hear a lot of the support for the snow fencing and and live snow fencing. I think that's an area that we can really look into moving forward. So that that's our plan. We'd be back to council with sort of the the results of that meeting and those discussions.
Counselor Wilhelm? Yeah, that's a great idea, John. I think I'd like to see in that report. What you all feel you can do in whether it's six months, year, three years, five years, et cetera. So it's broken down by timeframe and then we'd have a better idea. And, you know, you're gonna have, like you say, spend quite a bit of time on that report because it's quite extensive.
I just got one last question for you. So the draft report had to be to the province by, was it the fifteenth of November?
It was the the thirteenth, and that got submitted. And then the final report needs to be submitted to the province by December fourth. So I anticipate receiving the final report anytime. And, you know, we will be reviewing that prior to submission, but it will be into the province prior to that. Prior to December fourth.
And that goes to the Ministry of Transportation?
Or municipal housing affairs. Like that's that's the where the grant was from.
Was it initiated out? Okay, I was just wondering if we might get some comments back from the province on that report as well. Daryl?
I may add one last thing. In this report, we we got to remember our shared boundaries with other counties as well. I know Perth East and behind my house, you know, there's three different townships share a same road. And we we want to juggle things and adjust things. And our local township works with those other townships within a different county to orchestrate. And I know the the boys there, you would, within our roads department, they they do a supreme excellent job and keep things to a minimal. And the delivery is excellent. And it is difficult when you start juggling into other townships and counties because they have to all of a sudden adjust to to try and accommodate for new routes potentially if it happens. So it's not as quite as easy as we all would like to think.
Okay, so we'll wait for the final report to come back and then we'll get a report back to council, as will the lower tier councils, I'm assuming. See, that's their goal as well.
I'll leave that to my counterparts to in.
Ironote?
Ironote, but I I will be bringing the report to county council.
Okay, perfect. Moving on. We did we did do a motion to accept the report and go on it, just double checking. Yep. Okay, we're moving on to staff reports. And first up, we have P O A and Linda Becker for the budget and the submission to M S S C. And we can get Linda up there. No, there's decent stuff, of course. There's some neat technology for sure. Getting close to getting Linda on?
Senator, Warden, we have, we have her on here. I'm just centering, you know, so. She's on here.
Still see your name really on the screen, yeah?
This is Doug for a question.
Go right ahead.
On the website, on a public one, you, how come I can't see any of the the? It look, I've got an iCompass here that's protected. In case yous don't know, I have another computer that I read off of. And and right now, it's iCompass password protected. It won't let the public see the reports. Is that normal? This is the first time I've ever done it.
That's the question I can't answer. I'll have to go to the powers that be here and maybe I T is why that is. Because the the reports and everything is a public document.
Yeah, we generally don't put it through the chair. We generally don't put anything on the website that would be password protected.
ICompass, the county of first, the username, password and assignment. But it's fine.
We'll look into it. Quick question for you people on the screen. I don't see Linda up there yet. What's the video like today? Is it better?
And Linda is on the screen at the bottom in the middle.
She's not on my screen?
Hello?
Oh, I hear Linda now. I hear but don't see.
No, I don't have a camera. You all know what I look like. I'm I'm sorry. I was I was having a few technical issues there. I've prepared a report for M S S C this afternoon and also for council. Our courts were closed first by order of the Chief Justice, March thirteenth, twenty twenty. And they remain closed to in-person appearances up to and including January twenty second, twenty twenty one. Our court offices scheduled matters for resolution and audio plea since July seventh. The municipal prosecutor's been meeting with defendants by telephone. Those cases identified for resolution are adjourned to an audio plea date. Our court has registered convictions on four hundred and fifty four resolved cases as of November seventeenth. There are many courses, cases that will require a trial date, but at this time, we can't schedule these matters. We're working towards obtaining Zoom Pro license for use for video trials and remote court appearances. As this is the only platform that's been approved by the province. Our timelines for conviction for those that failed to respond and fine enforcement have been extended by order of the Chief Justice to at least December first, twenty twenty. As of today, this this data is still under consideration. Might get moved back again. Provincial teleconferences for the M C M A managers have been held more frequently lately and we're moving towards opening P O A video courts. So on to the charges filed, there's a twenty two percent reduction. From your average number of charges filed to the end of September. Twenty five percent reduction from average revenue collected. Of that fine revenue that's collected, seventy four percent results from charges under the Highway Traffic Act, seventeen percent from Compulsory Auto Insurance Act. And the other nine percent is other statutes. I have attached the M S S C budget for presentation this afternoon. I have to be honest, this is probably the most difficult budget I've ever ever had to work on. I'm basing my numbers on the last five years. I don't know what's going to happen. No one ever saw this, foresaw something like this happening. So where you can see the there's still an overage as of the end of September, but it's modest. So we're still covering our costs.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's something anyway. So I have I don't know. I welcome any questions about that first report.
Okay, questions for Linda on her report and the M S S C budget is what it is. Don't see any hands up on the screen. Don't see any up in here. I think we're good on that one, Linda. So just before we move on to the next part, I'm gonna ask that Perth County receives the P O A operational update and M S S C budget report for information. Moved by Counselor Wright, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Gary. Okay, Linda?
All right. So secondly, I have a request for support for the Municipal Court Managers Association on P O A modernization. There's a number of items that have been on hold for some time that would, we could deal with now. They're talking judicial resources, shortage of them. So I've included with my report the P O A advocacy summary, which asks for support and assistance in the following areas. To provide resources, direction and commitment to immediate recovery efforts for COVID nineteen related backlogs. Solution to improve access to justice, including implementation of the Bill one seventy seven reforms. Providing us with adequate judicial resources. And creating a sustainable justice system through the enhanced enforcement of court ordered fines and by decreasing cost to P O A. By indexing fines and increasing court costs as set out by the regulation. And we wish to improve the partnership to streamline and modernize provincial offenses court by improving working relationships and prioritizing the allocation of judicial resources. Demonstration of equal partnerships and sharing of responsibility. Had a few frustrations in that area in the last while, so.
Thanks, Linda. Questions for Linda on that or comments? Todd?
Good morning, Linda. Thank you for the report and drawing to our attention the need for some some advocacy, perhaps is the right word. Good morning, Linda, um, thank you for the report and drawing to our attention the need for some uh, some a- advocacy perhaps is the right word. On uh some of the changes that are needed, um, I guess my question, and, and I, I hope it's not a foolish one, is with regards to um judges and. Obviously, there's going to be quite this sort of glut of cases that have to get through the system in the near future. And it seems that the, the report requests uh allocation of additional judicial resources, but it's not easy to get a judge up to speed, is it?
You mean with the new technology?
Well, just, I mean, if, if you need to hire, I mean, a short term, a whole bunch more judges, like, that's an issue, right?
Yes, they do require a period of mentorship. The, the assignment problem. We're, we're sharing them with criminal courts, the Justice of Peace are now doing first appearance court of criminal. And I've been told by our regional senior justice of peace who is responsible for all the scheduling and, and for providing us with judicial resources. That he won't be giving us any blitz courts. We would need some in order to catch up, so um. I think that everyone in my position is at a loss for how we are ever going to recover from this without. More support and more, more resources, basically.
But I assume, if I may, uh, ask sort of the natural follow-up question, that if the province were to concede and say, okay, we need to hire more judges, more justices of peace, whatever that is. That there would be a ramp up time anyway, that would be not insubstantial, it would take time for those people to become effective at their jobs and, and so forth, or am I wrong?
No, you're correct.
Any other counsel?
Uh, yeah, it's a, an excellent report and I sympathize uh with you. What I cannot support this for two reasons. On page twenty-seven, number four, implement of an administrative penalty for all automatic enforcement. I had too many relatives fighting too many wars to not allow people a chance to be in court, to have their case heard. And on page twenty-eight, expand the municipal act so that the fines will now be added to your property taxes, I cannot support that.
Alright, the um. There's already provisions for fines to be added to municipal property tax rolls, but it's limited. It has, the, the defendant's name has to be exactly as it appears on the tax roll, so no, it couldn't be go- placed onto a jointly owned property, for example. So there's speaking of um. An am- amendment to that section. I don't use it myself, um, I find that our collection agencies are much more effective by um. Issuing judgments and garnishments, rather than have this placed onto their. Property tax rolls.
Thanks, Linda, any other questions? Any other comments? Not seeing any hands moving anywhere. I have a motion here, that Perth County Council receives a request for support. For M C M A on P O A modernization report for information. Perth County Council directs staff to write letters to support, to the, up support to the Attorney General, M P P Randy Pettapiece, AMO. And other municipalities, do I have a mover and a seconder? I don't have any movers or seconders, so I'm gonna try a little slightly different approach. Basically the same, but eliminating. Number four. On page twenty-seven. Page four and twenty-seventh, which is what Counselor McDermott referred to. And uh, one on page twenty-eight of the report. So we're gonna do what we said, but we're gonna eliminate those two lines or those two paragraphs from. And we'll, and we'll make it clear in the letter that we want those two things eliminated. So now do I have a mover and a seconder, I have a mover and Counselor McDermott, and a seconder and Counselor Wilhelm. Any further questions or comments? Don't see any hands, those in favor. That's carried, thank you, thanks, Linda.
Thank you, have a good day.
You're welcome, you too, see you this half.
Yes.
Okay, next up is Betty Jo Belton. From Archives and. I didn't see Linda at the very, very top. All of a sudden she started talking, she was there, I was wondering if she was by phone.
Good morning, everyone.
Oh, there's Betty Jo. Take her away, Betty Jo, we're ready.
Good morning, council, so the report that you have provides a budgetary outlook for twenty twenty-one. And an update on our activities so far this year at the Archives, and that the report is for council this morning and Municipal Shared Services Committee uh this afternoon. So as far as the budget, uh, right now, uh, subject to council's budget review process. Archives overall expenses for next year are expected to decrease by approximately five and a half percent. And that's primarily due to a recommended staffing change, so um what we were asking is. We have two temporary clerks, uh, Archives clerks who's uh employment is coming at, to an end, uh, at the end of this year. And we're recommending that there would be a permanent uh Archives technician, one person hired next year, so that accounts for most of that change. Uh, as far as twenty twenty activities, I, I won't go into a lot of detail about our ongoing projects, but highlights are there in the report for council. And um, having said that, uh, Mr. Warden, through you, if there are any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Questions for Archives? No hands on the screen, no hands in the room, okay, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the N S S C two thousand and twenty-one budget present, budget report. An operational update for Stratford Perth Archives, and that council approves the report for submission to. M S S C budget meeting of November the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, move by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by. Counselor McKenzie, those in favor, it's carried, thanks, uh, Betty Jo. Moving on. Tree inspectors report, we have two, we have the September one. We'll deal with that first, anybody have any questions with regards to the one for September? Not seeing any hands, I have a motion. That County Council receives the September two thousand and twenty tree inspectors report for information, move by Counselor Kellam, second by Counselor Casenberg. Those in favor, that's carried, moving on, October two thousand and twenty tree inspectors report, does anyone have any questions with regards to that one? Not seeing any hands, I have a motion, Perth County Council receives. The October two thousand and twenty tree inspectors report for information, move by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Ike. Those in favor, carried. Okay, moving on, we have notice of intent administrative fee, Sean, are you addressing this?
Warden, yes, I am. Warden, to you, through you to council, say good mornings, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, but. Currently, I just want to highlight a few things, uh, currently, there are no fees associated with the submission of a notice of intent to injure or destroy trees pursuant to the county's tree conservation by law. Uh, the intent of the bylaws outlined in the preamble is to improve the forest soil, fish, wildlife, water resources of the county. Through the conservation and improvement of its woodlands and woodlots. Therefore, this bylaw by and large is for the benefit of all residents, visitors, ecosystems within the county. Appropriately, the costs of enforcing the bylaw are borne by the county. Under the bylaw, uh, notice of intent or N O I must be submitted when logging activity being carried out pursuant to section three of the bylaw. And as illustrated in the report, there are a number of administrative tasks associated with processing an N O I. Submission of an N O I is typically carried out for the financial benefit of the landowner and or logging contractor. Through the sale of the resulting lumber and other forest products. It's also very important to note that what we're referring to here is not logging activity intended for a landowner's own use. Or firewood or personal woodworking projects, et cetera. As this sort of logging activity would fall under exemption pursuant to subsection five eleven of the bylaw. Currently, costs of the administrative tasks associated with the submission of an N O I are not recovered. Since there is typically a direct financial benefit to the landowner and or logging contractors associated with the submission of an N O I. It may then be appropriate to charge a nominal fee to offset related administrative costs. A fee of fifty dollars is being recommended in this report. In terms of volume, N O I is account for an average of uh seventy-one of all inspections per year, which is approximately seventy-nine percent. If a fifty dollar fee is applied, this would result in approximately three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in annual revenue. Which would offset many of the costs associated with the administrative tasks required for processing an N O I. Should also be noted that fees, fees of this nature are not uncommon. A survey of twelve Western Ontario municipal tree conservation programs revealed that six charged some sort of fee. These figures are presented in the report and they range from fifty dollars up to five hundred dollars. The fee being recommended by staff in this report is in line with the low end of these fees. Um, that's everything I wanted to highlight, the report is before you, I'm, I'm happy to hear any questions.
Thanks, Sean, questions for Sean, Daryl?
Yeah, Noah, I get the intent of this. Um, as far as doing the payments and receiving the monies, how is that going to be set up? Will there be extra work running around trying to collect this fifty bucks, I get it's thirty-five hundred bucks, it's thirty-five hundred bucks. There isn't one county though that does not have staff, it's something we are counting, it's something we agreed to as a county. And we're a rural farming community, we should have that built in as much, we can argue that it's good for the farmer, it's good for the logger, well, it's good for industry in general. And our cities don't build, business don't happen. I just don't want to see adding extra, it's the fifty bucks, I'll tell you, I'm getting my bush log right now, you're gonna see. The gentleman came in and the side of my truck, we did the paperwork, it was quick and easy and fast. Now I get it would probably not take much more time to do the fifty bucks, but this guy is, he's busy. Now he's gotta worry about that extra staff of doing payments, receiving paperwork, extra, extra. I just, I, I, I get the intent, it's good-hearted. But. The receiving of it within the office and the extra shuffling around, storing this money, bringing it forward, are we collecting it? It, it, it's unique, that's my concern, thanks.
Other comments or questions? Laura, you comment?
I do, so through the board, and point well taken, uh, we had talked, uh, there was comment at council some time ago about. When we go through our budgets, if there is an opportunity to um bring in administrative fee, you notice it's not a permit. These are permit is a whole different ballgame, comes with obligations and liability. So an admin fee is strictly just something to offset the cost of administration piece of it. And so as staff go through their, their budgets, they are looking, is there any opportunity to uh generate revenue that makes sense? And that certainly we take the direction of council, we're happy to do it, either way, all this is, is to, here's an opportunity. If uh council decides they want to pursue it, well, we will administer it, if they decide not at this time, that's fine, we will take that direction as well.
Bob?
One question I have is, has this been discussed with Marvin and what's his thoughts and, and concerns on it?
Warden, uh, this, this has been discussed with Marvin, though.
Counselor Wilhelm?
I'd, I'd like to uh have Marvin's input on us before we go forward with that, I think that's important.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
If I may intervene here, can we bring to Martin's attention, or Marvin's attention that we did bring it to council? And these are a couple of the concerns we have, do you see this being an option with the, the foresteries you work with? With this just potential endless chaos, you know, yeah, thank you, good, well, well made.
Personally, I don't think it's that big of a deal, but if that's council wishes, then we will definitely do it, so I'm gonna have a motion, I'm gonna re, reword this motion. Perth County Council receives the notice of intent administration fee report. And that Perth County deferred the decision until a report is received from the tree inspector Marvin Smith. Do I have a mover and a seconder, Bob Wilhelm, Daryl Hurley? Everybody else got their hand up on that one? Uh, those in favor, it's carried, so that's the decision for now.
Yeah, it's a difference.
Okay, next, next, but uh one of our bigger items, uh, we have paramedic services. Uh, we have Mike Deare here, who's been extremely busy in the last. Couple of weeks, probably hasn't spent a whole lot of time at home, and also we have Mac Gopman has joined us for this report, so take it away, gentlemen.
Thank you through the board and um appreciate that, um, so the report before you will be open for, of course, as always, like questions. I um, um, so we submitted that and it's also the reports that go to the M S S C uh later today as well. And uh before um we open the floor, just a couple of things and updates with respect to cedar crop, so. Um, this has been, um, as the warden had mentioned, a very busy week, we, for a couple of weeks actually, um, responding to this human health emergency. We, uh, you know, last week. We, it came to our attention that uh the cedar crop needed assistance in conducting um swabbing tests. To determine the severity of what was going on in there, and through paramedic services, we were able to um support our um community in that way. And um, as we all know here through the news, uh, media channels, that the news was not good. We, um, by Saturday, um, were mobilizing and calling in staff to start a decanting process. So that we could remove residents of the home, both COVID positive and also COVID negative. Um, to appropriate areas uh in order to make sure that the level of care that they required would be maintained, as well as to help. With resources inside the home that we're deploying through the, here on Perth Health Alliance and through public health to make sure that. Um, they were able to continue to take care of the uh residents in, in that community, overall, we moved over the weekend roughly twenty-seven individuals. Um, and uh I will have a final count at some point, but that's uh was a significant operation for our paramedic service. We also um tested um several over the past two weeks and over the weekend, it would be. Well into over a hundred uh individuals, um, maybe even two hundred at this point in terms of being able to get baseline uh testing that's. Um, we had to do, um, so thanks to our health system partners, uh, to here on Perth Health Alliance and um. Uh, here on Perth Public Health, we also deployed oxygen units through our, this is one of the reasons why we have things like this, um, even though it wasn't. Um, in car oxygen or something like that, we have um multi casualty incident equipment and we deployed oxygen to the nurse, or to the residents. To support their operations through one of the evenings until a vendor could supply more oxygen in the morning. So we had a real integral um role and as a system partner in responding to this. Um, we continue to be committed to the community and uh this is just an example of uh the importance of. The preparation, the training and the support that we receive. Not just from, um, I guess, the, for the entire community and from this council and uh from um our paramedics. Our paramedics were brilliant, we had staff stand up and volunteer to come in, of course, they're uh. In, in their, of course, the duty were paid, but they volunteered to come in and go into uh a difficult situation, so I'm real proud of uh that work. And um, that's uh leads us to where we're at today and uh things are getting certainly better in cedar crop from what I understand. And our operations. And our operations was able to stand down in terms of a special operation as of yesterday. So we continue to support as necessary. So I just wanted to provide that update in a timely way since we have a council meeting. And I will open the floor to questions with respect to the report or if you have any further questions on respect to our operations in Cedarcroft, happy to answer those as well.
Questions for Mike? Daryl?
Yeah. What kind of testing do you use now for sure for the COVID related? What, what test are you using?
We're, we're doing the, so our test is through public health and it's the nasal swab test. It goes to, it goes to a lab and to the public health system. And I believe our tests are going to a lab in London, Ontario.
And yeah, so you do a single test and you base it off of the result of that?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Wilhelm?
I don't want to be a cold-hearted SOB, but I congratulate you for filling in and, and avoid that a private for profit I don't know, I guess residential home did not properly prepare themselves for the second wave. And I guess my question is, do they get billed for the extra costs? The EMS is incurring for this. Like I say, they're a private for-profit facility that should have been prepared. And from what I see, and I'm just going by what I read in the papers and such like, it appears they did not prepare properly. And I don't believe all of Perth County should pay for a for-profit.
Mike, I'll let you address that.
Sure. Thanks. Through the warden, a couple of things I certainly won't make in this formal setting any kind of assumptions in terms of indeed their level of preparedness. However, I won't comment on their, that aspect of it because I can't really understand what happened prior to. But from our perspective, a couple of things to consider. One, if for the transfers and evacuation of our residents or nursing home, that would be our normal operation for any kind of emergency that would happen, whether it be fire or whatever, with respect to the COVID testing, which is above and beyond. I have had dialogue with the warden and we will be sending invoice to the facility to recuperate any kind of cost that was associated directly to that. And thirdly, with respect to the provincial response to COVID-related incidents. There, while the money hasn't been released, we are tracking all costs and we are submitting our costs directly to the province of Ontario. And they've said aside seventy-seven billion dollars for ambulance services. And I understand there's other funding as well. But should the, we not be able to recover those costs, we will, we will certainly include all related expenses to this incident and put that into that pot of submission for funding from the province.
Other questions? Comments? Don't see any hands up on the screen. Thanks, Mike. Now, did you want to discuss the budget at all or just everybody's headed in advance? Nobody has any questions? We'll just keep going here. Or Matt, do you have anything to add?
No, I was going to apologize to council that I walked in here without my mask on. I mean, and I don't forget that I was influenced by our Freedom Marchers in Almeria as well as St. Thomas on the weekend. So when Mike was busy with the craziness going on, so Cedarcroft, we had the Freedom Marchers in St. Thomas, but I left my mask on my desk.
Okay, so I have a motion here. The Perth County Council receives a paramedic service financial forecast projection two thousand and twenty for information. And the council approved the report for submission to the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the municipal shared services committee meeting. Move by. Councilor Aggins, seconded by Councilor Wilhelm. Those in favor? It's carried. Thanks, Mike. Okay, we are moving on to public works.
John? Thank you, warden. Again, good morning, council. Just one verbal update, if I may. I just want to make council aware of something here. Stratford Tourism has a new initiative called Lights on Stratford, which is a winter festival of lights at key attractions and sites in the city here. This festival starts tonight and runs through to February fourteenth. Since our courthouse is one of the most photographed and well-known landmarks in the region, we were approached to be part of this festival and to outfit the top of the tower of the courthouse with remote control professional lighting system and which will apparently create a tower of light. There was grant funding to cover the cost of the installation and lighting infrastructure. And that infrastructure will remain in place for future winter festivals. And we will also have control of that system if we want to light the tower, be future dates or special occasions. So just bringing, making there, I'm aware of that. So we look forward to seeing that tonight. Nick has assured me that everything's tested, ready to go, and that begins tonight. I'm moving on to my first report here. We have the intersection of Road one forty and Perth Line ninety-one. And if I may, just want to go back to two thousand and sixteen because I know there is a few councillors here who weren't around at that point in time. And just give you a little bit of a background of this particular situation. So in the summer of two thousand and sixteen, Wellington County approached Perth County about the potential construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Perth Road one forty and Perth Line ninety-one. And that's Wellington Road nine and Wellington Road eight. Perth at the time asked for Wellington's justification for that roundabout and the supporting accident history. Well, Wellington did not have a policy, specific criteria or justification for roundabouts. They certainly did have experience in constructing, constructing roundabouts and they did so at an intersection east of this location. Reasoning that they provide back then for the roundabout was that they had a fatal, there was a fatal collision in two thousand and fifteen at the intersection. There is less than ideal geometry. So I provided a picture in the report and as you can see, the intersection is skewed. It's not ninety degrees to see at intersections. This roundabout was also requested by politicians in Wellington. And Wellington County at the time was making improvements to prevent fatalities on the roadways. And of course, roundabouts have many safety and environmental benefits, which I'm sure we can all agree with. But we didn't, we weren't able to receive accident history until late two thousand and seventeen. And that accident data indicated that the intersection did not have a high collision rate. And what I mean by that is that within the Ontario traffic manual, under, say, an always stop warrant or a signal warrant, there is a collision warrant as part of that. And a high collision frequency is defined in those warrants as four acts, on average, four accidents in a in a year's period over a three-year span. And so since that intersection did not have a high collision rate and what we found was with that accident, see that there were actually intersections in the area with higher collision rates over the same review period. We didn't support the construction of a roundabout due to insufficient technical justification and minimal collision history. Fast forward to August of this year and a failure to yield accident at the intersection resulted in a fatality, which has renewed discussions of a roundabout and resolutions from both the Town of Minto and Mapleton that I have included in the report. And those resolutions are requesting that both the councils of Wellington County and Perth County consider placing a roundabout at the intersection of Wellington Road eight and Perth County Line ninety-one. So following the fatal accident in August, public work staff from both Perth County and Wellington County and the OPP, Matt, and we requested a comprehensive update of accident data from, from both OPP. And we discussed collision history and details of those accidents that would be susceptible to relief from alternative intersection controls. And as I said before, a high accident frequency is considered to be four accidents per year over a three-year period. And at this intersection, the updated data suggested that the accident frequency is one point seven five or just under two accidents per year. It should be noted that there have been two fatal collisions within the last five years. One, of course, this year in August and one in August of two thousand and fifteen. Both fatal collisions were during the weekday in daylight hours. So we've met on several occasions and agreed upon the following to undertake both an always stop warrant and traffic signal warrant analysis. That we've already tried many additional and supplemental safety devices at this intersection. And we've taken that as a measured approach. The next step in that measured approach would be alternative intersection controls. And we both agree that the frequency of accidents at this location does not meet that high accident frequency as defined in the Ontario traffic manual and the warrant criteria. Wellington County has budgeted for a roundabout at this intersection in two thousand and twenty-five. And Perth County has not budgeted for a roundabout at this time. Warrants for an always stop and traffic signals have been performed and neither did meet either warrant analysis. However, criteria for the signal warranted, for this traffic signal warrant was partially met. Wellington County has two other roundabouts scheduled for construction within the next eight years. And as an interim measure, until those, those roundabouts begin, they are proposing temporary traffic signals at both of those locations. And additionally, both, both Perth County and Wellington County are recommending that temporary traffic signals be installed at the intersection of Perth Road one forty, Perth Line ninety-one, Wellington eight and nine as a trial. Since we've tried so many supplemental devices at this intersection, we both agree that the next step in the measured approach would be alternative intersection controls. We believe that the temporary signal system will be interim safety enhancement for this intersection. It's anticipated that this installation would begin immediately. And it would be a cost of a total of a hundred and twenty thousand, so sixty K would be Perth County's portion. And as, as I stated before, Perth County staff are supporting this recommendation and requesting approval from council. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Don't come.
Through you, Warden Heskey, and thank you for the report, John. Very well done. This has been an ongoing incident for us for, for many, many years. I know that all council of North Perth and especially the mayor has fielded many, many phone calls and emails, especially over the last year as well, Warden Heskey as well, probably some of the council. You know, this isn't a very big ask. As, as Warden Heskey has always said, you can't fix that word. But I think this is a very good step for preventative maintenance and I truly support this decision. Thank you.
Councilor Aggins?
I too believe it's a great compromise and I'm hoping that it not become temporary, it become full-time that in the future that it could be lights there instead of a roundabout if it is as effective as I hope it's going to be. You know, I know you'll keep monitoring and whatever, but if it solves a problem, then that's great.
Councilor Wilhelm? I, I agree that it's a good report, John, and, and that I certainly prepared to support the temporary traffic device. The one thing, and I don't think we probably got the staff to do it. I would like to see our, a list of our intersections and accidents in Perth County and in the Lower Tiers. Because the Lower Tiers have some roads that are probably higher accidents and higher fatality than this intersection.
Absolutely.
So I think that this may be temporary, but maybe we have to look at a bigger picture and how many intersections do we have to do this work on to try and save lives?
John? Thank you through you, Warden Heskey. Yeah, I certainly appreciate all those comments and support here. And, and speaking specifically to Councilor Wilhelm's suggestion here, that is one thing that we are planning on doing is, and next week we'll be meeting with Perth OPP to discuss the possibility of getting some of that accident history for Perth County. I know over the last little while, we've dealt with a number of accidents at intersections around Perth County. And I know it's been a big focus for, for many councillors here. And something that Bill Wilson and I have talked about recently and and one thing we, we sort of lack here at Perth County and other municipalities as well is sort of a master, master transportation plan. And not that we need a, a full study or things like that, but we do need something in place where we can better deal with situations like this and have policy and procedures in place. So we do already have a number of policies that we have and just maybe something, a master or overall plan that we can incorporate a number of these policies and further look into a lot of this accident history, which will help us identify these locations and solutions moving forward. So, so that we fully expect to, to bring back and to see an accident history report hopefully in two thousand and twenty-one. And we're looking to bring as part of our two thousand and twenty-one business plan looking into sort of a master transportation plan.
Councilor Wilhelm?
If you take your meeting with OPP, I would suggest that you also invite Chief Skinner because he's doing some work on intersections and accidents, et cetera. So.
Yes, through, through you, Warden Heskey. Certainly, of course, when we deal with the area of Perth South, we need to include Stratford Police in that. And they have been extremely helpful, certainly with the last report that I brought with the always stop at twenty-six and one thirteen there. So we appreciate and will certainly keep them apprised of this as well.
Okay, Councilor Casenberg, Duncan, anything to add here? I see a no from Todd and Matt. No, no, a no from there. John and I have discussed this, I don't know, a couple, three, four, or five times over the summer and fall. So you're kind of maybe thinking, we, we did talk about a four-way stop, a can always stop, which we just did in line twenty-six and one thirteen. But the feeling amongst some of the trap or the roads department people was the stop sign's not working now. So what's adding two more maybe going to do with that intersection? So that John asked me my opinion. I said, I think the stoplights might be better. They're going to be censored off of traffic because one way is far heavier volume than the other way, right, John? So it's not like it's going to be flipping back and forth all the time. It is going to be censored driven. So hopefully it'll work. It won't be a whole lot different than the light at one thirty and number eight. Daryl?
If I can hop in there, the thing with a four-way stop is yes, somebody still may run a stop sign, but everybody is stopping and it gives everybody the time to catch somebody else. They, they do work. They work effectively. I'll refer to the Almeria one, for example. There hasn't been an accident there virtually since then signs went in. They work because everybody has to stop and yes, somebody can blow through. But, but it gives everybody the chance to catch it. And yeah.
It's definitely a help.
Oh, it, it, it works a hundred percent. It, it does. I, I have friends and family in Almeria. It's ended it. And boy, there were stoozies there. It was not pretty.
Other comments? I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the intersection of Perth Road one forty and Perth Line ninety-one report for information and that council approves the installation of temporary traffic signal system.
report for information, and that council approves the installation of temporary traffic signal system at the intersection of Perth Road 140 and Perth Line 91 in partnership with Wellington County, being funded from the Capital Roads Reserve, moved by Counselor Cullen, seconded by Counselor Kazenberg. Those in favor? She's carried.
Perfect. Way in line.
Thank you, Warden Heskey. Next report is the Wayland Line Upload and Boundary Road Agreement with Middlesex County. The council recalls, we decided to sort of do two stages with the Wayland Line Upload, as stage one being the formulating this report here. And that is uploading a portion of the Wayland Line from Wayland Corners and to Perth Road 151. A Middlesex County has already uploaded this into their road system from Luke and Bidolph. This road was previously a boundary road between Perth South and Luke and Bidolph. The section that we are talking about here today is a Class 3 roadway. And this makes sense in a lot of ways, as far as level of service and having representative jurisdictions, road jurisdictions, look after a roadway. So this is mirroring the upload of Middlesex County and corresponding boundary agreement. We already had a, a boundary agreement with Middlesex. Not that we had a, a boundary road, but we did maintain a section of their County Road 50, which is from Prospect till the Highway 7. We maintained that from Middlesex in the wintertime. So we've, we've updated the agreement. It has gone through legal. And just one thing to point out that we caught here, there is a, an error here. It should read from Perth Road 151 to Road 164A. So there was a small little portion on the west side of Highway 23 at Wayland Corners there that was a boundary road between Perth South and, and Luke and Bidolph. And it's about 200 meters long. So that further uploads a 5.5 kilometer section of the Wayland Line. As I say, the, the agreement is attached to the report. It has been gone through legal at both from Perth and Middlesex, and has been, NA Engineering from Middlesex County has informed me that it will be updated to, to reflect the 164A and the 5.5 kilometers in the schedule. If there are any questions with this report.
Questions? Comments? Not seeing any on the screen. Not seeing any here. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Wayland Line Upload and Boundary Road Agreement Report for Information. That Perth County Council upload Wayland Line from Perth Road 151 to Road 164A by amending Schedule A of the Bylaw 2956, being a bylaw to designate through highways within the county. And the Perth County Council authorized the Warden and Clerk execute the Boundary Road Agreement with Middlesex County concerning the maintenance and repair of the Wayland Line from Perth Road 151 to Road 164A. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Aggins. Those in favor? Carried.
Thank you.
Okay, courthouse elevator update.
Thank you, Warden Heskey. This is just an update report and basically summarizes an email I received from NA Engineering. This is in response to our special council meeting that we had for the courthouse campus where there was a recommendation to look at a potential addition and elevator within the addition there on the courthouse campus. And I, I'd asked council, what does that do to our, our current project that we're working on with the elevator within the courthouse itself? So I thought it'd be prudent to just give you an update of where the consultant is at with this process. And I'll be happy to summarize that for you. So to date, the design and layout of the elevator configuration, including recent modifications to washrooms on several levels, have been established, approved, and incorporated. The construction documents are approximately 75%. I've included some of the structural drawings in this, in this report here. And that includes floor plan sections, three-dimensional views of the elevator, structural information, as well as construction detailing. They have completed considerable coordination with Delta, which is an elevator company. And they've been able to develop a plan which will not require us, or the elevator machine to be craned in from overhead. So there's no need for removing or any modifications to the exterior envelope of our courthouse. One of the things that I just wanted to point out is some of the risks to the, this project, and certainly the budget. We, well, we've done some investigation there. The consultants done some investigation at our foundations and footings. That's helped us aid in locating a, a good location for the elevator with, within the courthouse. However, of course, it's always something when you get into digging and, and so there needs to be a pit put in. There are unknown below-grade conditions in the area of the elevator pit, and that could certainly affect the potential schedule and budget of this project. To date, costs incurred by the consultant are somewhere around $40,000 plus HST. And there are some additional costs where we've had some scope changes and revisions and investigations. And that's, we've taken a look at the front entrance tower as a possible location. We've done excavation of the exterior footings, and we've also done several iterations of revisions for washroom layouts and things like that. So not only are we trying to get a fully ODA compliant elevator in the building, we're trying to create an ODA compliant bath washing within the facility as well. Not easily done in a 130-year-old building that was never meant to, or designed to have an elevator in it. So, so those are some things we have. We expect that the total cost, including those additional costs, to complete the project design and tender documentation, to be estimated about $60,000. When I, when I asked them if they could provide us some kind of ballpark cost estimate, I know NA is, is maybe a little reluctant to, to, to put their foot forward on, on that. I've kind of, I know I'm on, on record as saying that that's, could be, you know, 1.5 million or north of that for this elevator project. NA does have in-house ability for budget estimations, but that's typically on traditional construction projects. And this elevator project does have many atypical considerations. And they just don't have the in-house abilities to properly estimate those costs. So a couple of options that we could, if, if council is, would like a more detailed cost estimate, is we could engage a cost consultant as a third party to provide that estimation. The other thing we could do is go out to tender for the project, and that will, that will determine the cost effectively for us. Or we could engage a local project manager to complete a costing exercise. As I said, to date, consultant fees for the elevator are approximately $40,000, and we expect them to be about $60,000 if we're to complete it. So with this report, just trying to bring you up to speed where we're at with the project. We're about 75% complete. And just asking for council's approval to complete the elevator design and associated tender documents. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for John? Counselor Duncan.
Unfortunately, it's not a question or comment. I'm double booked.
Can't hear you.
This morning, so.
And now.
Unfortunately, I don't have a, a question or comment for John on this, but I'm double booked for a meeting this morning, so I'm just gonna bid everyone good day.
Yeah, I cut your hand there late, but John had started. Thanks, Matt.
No problem. Have a good day, everyone.
Okay, questions for John with your comments with regards to the elevator report, Counselor McKenzie?
Well, I think what we've done so far is probably work that we needed to do to explore that option. But I do think the option that we talked about at the special meeting is probably still worth pursuing, and I think in the end it would maybe be the best option to pursue. To give John advice where to go from here, I think we still need to know a little bit about the, the option that we talked about at the special meeting and, and get some information on that. But I think, I, I still think that would be by far the better way to put an elevator in and, and, you know, obtain some additional office space onto the courthouse.
Counselor Wilhelm.
I agree with Counselor McKenzie, but I would like to see this go forward and, and get an estimate what it's going to cost. If we're going to look at this whole campus and costs, then we need to know what the cost would be in this, in my opinion. And then we can look at alternatives to, and compare figures.
Other comments? John, you got a rebuttal there?
Warden Heskey, maybe further to that comment there. If, if that's the consensus at council, then I, I think I, I would, you know, further recommend that we, we do complete this design. We do complete these tender documents. And then we can decide, or you can decide whether or not, you know, A, we go up to tender, which would, would give us a, a real cost estimate of this, and/or B, take those documents, pay and engage a consultant or a third party to do a detailed cost estimate.
Comments? Questions? Todd, any on that? Doug? Anybody in the room here? Any further comments? I agree with both counselors, McKenzie and Wilhelm. Yeah, I think the option that we discussed in the 29th of October was a very viable option. But again, we don't know what the cost of what this elevator might be, and it may come back where, well, that's not an option. So where does council want to go on this? Do you want to see some cost estimates garnered on what's presented here? And Counselor McDermott?
I'll, I'll move that, that John get the, the figures that he needs.
Okay, so I'm gonna have a little motion here that Perth County Council receives the courthouse elevator update report for information, and that council directs staff to obtain the necessary. Okay, so I'm just gonna ask, do we want to engage a consultant as a third party? Or do we want to engage a local project manager to complete the costing exercise? Preference? Bob?
John, if I read this correctly, you're figuring a consultant costs us $20,000 to do the estimate on the construction.
Through you, Warden Heskey. No, I'm suggesting that it's probably going to be another $20,000 for NA Engineering to complete the design and tender documents.
And, and any idea what it would cost a consultant to do the cost for the construction?
At this time, I don't have a cost estimate for, for that type of work. I, I can't obtain that. And maybe further to that, to Warden Heskey. And one thing we are doing, obviously, NA Engineering has done a lot of work at, at our courthouse campus over the years. You know, and I think it's, certainly we've had a changeover in staff over, over those many years. So some of this, you know, dates back over, over 10 years of some of the work that they've done. So I think I've kind of had discussions with them, and we're going to sit down with them, have them pull together all the information that they have with our, related to our campus and our facilities there. And as well, you know, we're doing the same thing. We're trying to compile all the information that we have and sit down, share that with each other, and then discuss some of these possibilities that have been brought up in the special council meeting, such as in addition to, to the courthouse with an elevator in that. So obviously, it doesn't matter whether it's external or internal to the courthouse. Nothing is exactly easy on that campus. And we just want to make sure that things that have been looked at before, we're not trying to, to redo, kind of thing. So if we've got work that we've looked at before, we want to make sure we've got that looked at.
Okay, so Counselor McDermott did make a motion that we would proceed to get the costing. We're not just exactly sure which route we want to go. So I'm gonna ask the mover if he would be willing to perhaps change that motion to receive the report and defer the decision until costs related to the final information be provided by staff.
Yep, that's fine.
That good?
That's good.
We'll have a seconder. Counselor Aggins. Any further comments or questions? Those in favor? One, two, three, four. So that would be two, four, six, eight votes. Those against? That would be two, four, six, seven, eight. If you're tied, because we lost the council, so it's a defeated motion. Counselor Wilhelm.
Perhaps I can bring in a revised motion that would, excuse me, allow staff to work with NA Engineering and complete the design. Don't go to a consultant to get the cost of the elevator, but finish the design of the elevator within, so that it can be ready for tender documents, et cetera, or whatever is included in that extra 20,000.
John, you understand what he's saying first? You don't want any misconceptions?
Through you, Warden Heskey. I think Counselor Wilhelm's getting sort of what I'm recommending currently is to see this project to completion as far as tender documents go. And I would support that recommendation. And, you know, obviously, if, if you do want, I will certainly reach out to, to NA Engineering and ask if they have a, a possible cost for, for that. But remember, you still have the option to go out to tender. And just because you go up to tender doesn't necessarily mean you have to approve the project. That is one way of obtaining a cost here, so.
So I'm gonna read a motion, Bob, and you tell me if you will move this. That Perth County Council receives the courthouse elevator update report for information, and Perth County Council directs staff to have NA Engineering complete the elevator design and ten, and associated tender documentation. So you're good with that?
Yes.
Do I have a seconder for that one? That would be Counselor Hurlick. Any further comments or questions? Those in favor of that motion, that one would be carried. Thank you. Thanks, John. I was trying to get through to closed session before we took a break, so you'll just have to indulge us for a few more minutes, because it'll take some manipulating with the devices to get to closed session. We can stand, stretch, and washroom break or whatever. So we are done with Public Works. We have council reports. Anybody have any council reports? See any? Next, we have 8.1, Committee on Inclusion and Diversity. So this is a notice of motion that Counselor Kazenberg put forward at the last meeting. So I'll let Todd just maybe speak to this briefly. And then we would need a mover and a seconder to move forward from that point on. And then we would need a mover and a seconder to move forward from that point on. Todd, floor is yours for a second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden and fellow counselors. I certainly have a a longer speech and a shorter speech, I suppose, and in the interest of keeping it short, perhaps I'll just say that certainly we've been watched through society. Changes occur over the last year that have heightened our attention to inclusivity and diversity. And I I believe that Perth County is a place where we welcome and value all people and all their contributions. And I think that there have been occasions where I have felt that that has been substandard in our in our communities, in our county. I'll tell you a personal story. Certainly, I watched with dismay at the Canada Day Parade in Atwood a few years back as a tractor entrance included the Confederate flag and displayed US political paraphernalia. And it just wasn't appropriate. Letters to the Lions Club from the community called out that provocative behavior of the parade participant. And to be honest, the Lions Club struggled with how to proceed. Because it's often this is framed as an issue of freedom of speech versus community inclusivity standards. I could tell you that the Lions Club at the time, we weren't prepared, we weren't aware, and certainly our stand isn't and wasn't solid at the time. So I find myself at this time in response to those who have presented to this council and who've petitioned council for action, thinking that it is at least a small step that we can take to begin the discussion. You know, can I say I know what racism is? Can I say I know what I believe inclusivity requires of us? Not fully. I, you know, I I haven't had to live with that or experienced that. But I certainly am open to the conversation, and I'm open to sitting and learning. Which is why I think our path forward is to strike a committee to evaluate a few things. And and those few things include the possibility of our county joining an association that is committed to inclusivity and diversity in communities. And also to establish, as other communities in Ontario have a charter that speaks to inclusivity and diversity and anti-racism. And that's why I brought this forward. We've heard from our constituents. We have opportunity to take some action, and that action probably is best served at this point by deliberate and thoughtful conversations amongst ourselves or some some component of council and some of those citizens who are interested in this matter. So that's why I've put forward this motion, and I saw move it.
Okay, so I have a mover. Do I have a seconder? I don't have a seconder. Last call for a seconder to that motion. I still see no hands, so that means it's table, right? It's failed. Sorry, Todd, that just never got a seconder, so that would be the end of that discussion. Okay, we've dealt with that. We'll move on to bylaws. Did anybody want to make any comments before I move on? Still quiet? Okay, we're gonna move on to bylaws, and I have I have bylaw three, seven, eight, one dash two thousand and twenty. Be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass this nineteenth day of November two thousand and twenty. I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Eggers. Those in favor? That's carried. The bylaw that is the next one that I don't actually have. And that would be bylaw three, seven, eight, two, three, seven, eight, three.
Three, seven, eight, two.
Oh, right. Yeah, so the confirmatory is gonna become eight, three.
Yes.
Yes, and this is the Wayland Line update one. Could you just perhaps read that off?
Warden, we are gonna share it on the screen.
It is shared?
We're we're going to be in a second.
Okay, so the bylaw is so that would be bylaw three, seven, eight, two, whereas section twenty of the municipal act is amended. Actually, before, I'm gonna read that all off. You people can read too, because that's gonna take me a while from this distance. Bob?
I don't know about everybody else. I've read this agreement. If you show me that it's changed to one sixty-four A, I'll move that we go ahead with this. If you go down to the bottom where it says one sixty-four, and it's changed to one sixty-four
Right there.
That has to be changed, and other than that, I will that agreement.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna make sure that it was one sixty-four A. Okay, so I have a mover. And you, McDermott, you're gonna second that? Counselor McDermott? Any comments or questions on that before I ask for the vote? Seeing none. Those in favor? It's carried. Okay, so I am gonna have a motion here that we, Perth County Council moves into closed session at approximately eleven eighteen. In accordance with section two, three, nine of Municipal Act SO two thousand and one dash twenty-five as amended to consider legislative services negotiations. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Willhout. Those in favor? It's carried. So we'll have a ten minute break. Confirmatory bylaw?
Before we do that, I just got a message from Becky saying Dr. Clausen's thinking we're going to move from yellow to orange.
Actually, I was gonna say that just before the meeting ended. I had a discussion yesterday afternoon. There's gonna be more announcements come out tomorrow from the premier's office. But more so to deal with the red zones right now. There might be the neighbor moving into red zone. That would be the regional Waterloo. And we could be going from yellow to orange. And I'm not ruling out Miriam Clausen saying we she could invoke some section twenty-two's. Because Middlesex did that, and if if we go, they'll be going as well. What section? So are we back live stream?
We're we're recording.
Okay. Bob?
You asked what section twenty-two was, and section twenty-two allows the minute of Dr. Clausen to put in regulations as she sees fit.
In fact, she could close your arenas, or you could close your gym or your dance studio or whatever without being directed by the province. Okay, we have confirmatory bylaw, and I'm gonna change this, the bylaw three, seven, eight, three two thousand and twenty being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation, the county of Perth, that its regular meeting held November nineteenth two thousand and twenty is read a first, second, and third time and finally passed November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Willhout. Those in favor? It's carried. Watching the screen to see if those hands go up, but they're not moving. And then I have a motion that county council meeting be adjourned at twelve fifty-four. Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you very much. A little longer, but we have some important stuff to go over.